Yes, I think we're all biological fuck. What the hell on the c-? You can pile up here.
All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. The time is now 7:00 PM and today is Tuesday, January 30th, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel on Facebook Live, I'm sorry, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin tonight with public comments from the Board. Do we have any public comments this evening?
I do if Caesar doesn't.
We'll start with Selectmen Nuzella.
No public comments.
All right, good to see you Caesar.
So I just, I want to state the obvious that we're in budget season and I know the school budget has been getting a lot of attention lately and I, so I just want to take this opportunity to reiterate comments that have been made by several members of both the School Committee and Finance Committee for the public to stay engaged and informed. I think the committees are doing all they can to be transparent, so just to remind folks, you can find the meeting schedules, the agendas, the dial-in information on the town website and if you're unable to attend via Zoom or in person, you can access recordings on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel. So there's a lot of resources out there for you to, oh, and by the way, if you watch the recording, you can watch it as 1.5 or 2X to save some time, useful tip. So there's lots of resources available for you to stay informed and plenty of meetings for you to give public comment and be engaged. At, I want to specifically mention a presentation that the Finance Committee Chair Evan Waters gave at the last FinCom meeting on the 25th where he gave a very nice, very simple, very understandable presentation of town revenue that includes levy limit, levy ceiling, Prop 2.5 and all of those terms and I think it was a very, very good, useful presentation for those who aren't, this is all new to you. And then something else that came up at that meeting was, and this has come up actually at some Capital Planning Committee meetings as well, support for a grant writer for the town. And I know I discussed this with the town manager and I think it's fair to say that there is support for such a role and it really will likely come down to money, to budget, as many things do. And I think, yeah, the rest is committee stuff, so.
All right, thank you Selectmen Imke. Any additional public comments from the Board this evening?
None for me, although I don't have to give my committee report now.
Oh, what's your committee?
I would, if I may, I would build on what Selectmen Imke said and just, I think it would be very, it's very, it'd be very useful and more productive at each of these meetings. Number one, to show up at the right meetings to discuss the right topics, but also to, yes, go back and look at, especially that FinCom meeting, because then you can come armed or prepared with the right vocabulary, understanding of the basics and it makes it for a much more productive discussion instead of interjecting, you know, misunderstandings or trying to catch up on basic terminology and understanding of budget terms and levy and all of that before engaging in the conversation. So, good comment and I just wanted to add to it, so.
All right. And I'll offer a public comment as well. I want to thank Selectmen Imke for the detailed reflections with regards to the situation with the School Committee. I think we are all aware, alarmed by the, by the budget challenges that the School Committee and the Superintendent are working through. I've expressed to Carol Arshinbo, the Chair of the School Committee, that, you know, anything that they need us to do, to let, let me know as soon as possible and, you know, we will, we will continue to support them and work with them. And I also want to give some thanks to the Town Manager for her continued support to the School Committee as well in kind of scrubbing some numbers and, and, you know, verifying, you know, what side of the budget things are sitting in and to help kind of manage through this crisis with full confidence that the result that we arrive at will be in the best interest of the community. And also, as a comment to the Board, I want to make the Board aware that I received an open meeting law violation complaint. It did not. It was for a meeting by the Cemetery Commissioners on November 30th. It was received in January, mid-January, so it was an untimely complaint. It did name me as, as an individual in the complaint, although typically you name members of the public body. So this Board does not need to respond. Again, it was a date that I wasn't at the meeting. I was actually in Greenfield that, that day at that time. So there is no response and I'm providing other, you know, for it, but we will, I'm noting this because it will not come to this Board for common reflection as normally required because the violation, as reported, is against the Cemetery Commissioners at a Cemetery Commission meeting. All right. Do we have any public comments this evening from the public? Sure. And I just want to remind the public a couple of things. While in this room, in the presence of the flag, I ask kindly if you can remove your hats, if you have them, and then second, just want to note that public comments are three minutes uninterrupted.
Hey, George Burden, 39 Courton Circle. I learned just last night that you guys added me to January 9th Agenda Meeting and I listened to the recording last night. I was pretty surprised at some of the things that were said. I don't know if it's retaliation over the meeting that I was here before, but Mr. Jeffries, you know, we've spoken over a year ago. You told me I was a good guy, you told me to go to the Chief of Police to file a complaint against my neighbor, I did so, you turned around and told me I was batshit crazy. Last night, when I listened to the thing, Mr. Franco indicates to me to, would like to ask me if the moon landed. I'd like to know, understand what that comment is, Mr. Franco. Do you know my whole situation? I'd really like to show everybody here what's going on and this has to do with the town. Okay, this does. This has to do with the town, they told me last night it has nothing to do with the town. I was physically assaulted on my street, the Lunenburg Police canceled an ambulance. Okay, they tried to cancel the ambulance on me, I ended up in two hospitals. You tell me that's not a situation that the town should be involved in? Nine inches of snow on our, our road last week, you tell me that's not a problem, okay? How do you get an ambulance and a fire station, a fire truck up our road with nine inches of snow? Everybody I've talked to in the states said that's a problem and you tell me, and you indicated last week you do not have a problem, that this is a civil issue. You tell me that's a civil issue? Any of these things I just mentioned is a civil issue? This is not a civil issue. This is more of a criminal situation going on that we feel the town is very involved in and we've gone to the, the Town Manager over a year and a half ago, well, not a year and a half, a little, about a year and a half ago, October 31st, 2022. We spent an hour and a half with her, she probably made three comments to us, wrote two things down on a piece of paper, never got back to us. All of a sudden, the Chief of Police is on my ass, taking us out on, on private property, telling me I'm violating private property that they shouldn't even been on. They're telling me they detained me and that's not, that's not a town issue? This is, we're talking about the Homeowners Association of Village of Flat Hill, there's 100 acres of property that I'm adeded to access to. We have a budding neighbors that hunt that property all day long. Mr. Franco, you mentioned gun laws last night. I don't know this, this is what all this is about because that's brand new to me. We thought we had that problem settled, but it sounds like you know a little more than us about what's going on here. Mr. Alzano, Alonso, you mentioned to me that I have some questions to answer to the, the Town Manager, can you please tell me what those are? I've answered every question, I'm waiting for answers from her, so I don't understand what you're asking. What, what, what questions are you referring to? Because you've mentioned that twice to me. I'm not sure if you know, Mrs. Imke, what the whole situation is, but you mentioned that, you know, it's not clear of, of the things that I asked for. Very clear, I asked the Town Manager how I file a complaint against the Chief of Police. Takes four months? It's a very simple, it was three sentences. It took four months to get a response from her. You think that's not clear? And I followed up, you talk about 500 emails? How many times have I had to follow up? I haven't gotten one response back pretty much, very little responses from the Town Manager and when I do, they're pretty kind of vague. Why do you think I have to follow up 500 times? If it is even 500 times, Mr. Jeffries, 300 texts from you, you've told me not to contact you, three times. I respect that very much, I've never contacted you. You've reached out to me, three on separate, three separate occasions after you've told me not to contact you. Sometimes just before the January 9th meeting, you did reach out to me. I didn't read the, I read the email and I sent it back to the Board because you asked me not to contact you. I don't know if that's a setup. You want me to contact you and it's a setup, right? You're telling me not to contact you, the Board-
Mr. Burdens, your, your time is up. If you can just provide-
Thank you very much. I was just wondering if, if everybody thinks this is how you treat a rape victim? Is this how you treat a rape victim? You basically crucify them? You crucify them and I hope everybody realizes that.
If you can provide some clarification as to whether or not the roads that had nine inches of snow were private roads or public, and if you want to provide some clarification on the date that that assault happened, that would be helpful. I just want to note that the roads that Mr. Burdens referred to are private roads that the town does not plow and the assault you referenced was over 10 years ago. Any other public comments this evening from the public?
Hi, Sarah Camer, 304 Lancaster Ave. And I'm speaking for myself.
Good to see you.
Yeah. I wanted to publicly thank the DPW salt truck driver who passed me this morning, threw salt and then came back, swerved it towards me and added more salt. It was kind of like trying to get a kitten out of a tree, I, I think, because I was sitting in my neighbor's driveway, the one with all the Trump signs usually, and contemplating whether I could actually get to work and I was able to get to work. It was really bad this morning, so I hope everybody got through that. The other reason I'm here is I just wanted to express my disappointment that we did not, as, as a town, give access to the land, to Park, the Parks Commission that the Open Space Commission recommended. I think they have taken it as far as they can without having the land in their care and control. I think without it in care and control, there is really no requirement for the residents of Lake Shirley to bona fide reach out to them and work with them. They have had discussions about considering it, an open space for many years now, it's, it's not a new discussion. It, it is one that people have been really thinking about and wanting to do something about, but cannot make plans on it unless they have that care and control. So I hope if it comes before you again, you reconsider the stance you took. The other thing I wanted to express disappointment with, sorry, I have a few, is that the budget that we have right now really doesn't reflect the value that I, I thought we had for education in this town. I understand the desire to limit every department to 2.5%, but that doesn't really work with the mandates that are required to run an educational system and I hope that we can find a way to alter that allocation because it, that allocation really doesn't reflect the value that I have in education and I, I have thought this town values it to a level that I do, but it, it really doesn't reflect that right now, it's disappointing. And then, lastly, this is more of a public service announcement. I am not going to run for the BOA in May. There will be a vacancy, so I encourage everyone who is dissatisfied with the town in some way to get off their soapbox and volunteer like you. Thank you.
I just want to offer you, we typically don't comment on public comments, we are scheduled for a site walk with Open Space and the Parks Committee and that will happen in the middle of February and we will bring the request to a vote before the warrant closes. Do we have any other public comments?
Ron DeLisio, 181 Reservoir Road. I just wanted to comment, I also attended the Finance Committee meeting and I thought a lot of the criticism toward the Town Manager and the 2.5% budget was unfair. I, I was thrilled when we got a Town Manager that was willing to be, take a more balanced approach and look at the entire town than just the school and this was, she came at a time when I had a child in the district. And I just, I feel like the Finance Committee, you know, there was a lot of talk about the democratic process and if this is what the majority wants to do, an override. Well, I feel like the majority, if, if they want to increase taxes, they have an obligation to be informed before making that decision to, you know, I attend or in watch almost every meeting in town and it gives you a more balanced approach. I'm not opposed to raising taxes when it's for something that's necessary and I'm already aware of the debt exclusions that will be necessary to address things like buildings, both in, on, for the municipal buildings and the schools. And I feel like as a middle-class person who, I don't have a child in school, I need to pick and choose the things that I can fund. I can't fund it all. If you want to lay, you know, not a debt exclusion, but an override of budgets upon me as well, all at the same time, when the economy is bad, there's no incentive for middle-class families like mine who have a low impact on the taxes. You'll be driving us out of town. And I think you need people who do not utilize the town services in order to offset the people who do. And I'm just thankful that the Town Manager has set the budget the way she has and she's always added more to the school by, by the time budget season is over. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lisio. Do we have any other public comments from the public?
Hi, everyone. John Bowen, 162 Highland Street. I'm here with Jean Marie Price. This was wonderful, thank you. This was so informative. This is over 500 pages of information with regard to, that I was able to isolate a number of different issues between communications between parties concerned with regard to the operation and the function of the Cemetery Commission. But first, before I get in, I would like to thank the Chair for my three minutes and the rest of the Board for taking the time to hear me. My synopsis here today is with regard to the Meaning of General Laws, Chapter 114, particularly the formation election under Section 22, as well as Sections 23 through 26, which is highlighted under the Town Chart Article 3, Section 3 through dash 5 A and B. This Board, the Cemetery Commission, is a redundancy Board wherein the Town Manager and DPW are 98% responsible for all cemetery operations. The use of the Cemetery Perpetual Fund must be cleared by the Town Manager for all of its uses. The Cemetery Commission, as it is presently organized, is merely a clerical position as it is organized and it has been for quite some time since the, since the things have changed. The DPW is responsible for all the work to the cemetery. We budget annually $20,000 for the cemetery through the DPW for maintenance. The present Board is requesting to the Capital Plan $738,000 for some outrageous number to be able to do things which are nowhere near what we can afford, we can't even pay for school. The, this Commission just seems to be wanting to add money. Four major budget items that are, that are, that we fund here is police, fire, schools and the DPW and then we put everything else, at least that's been the communicate that I've been seeing. I say that we should disband this Commission and add the $20,000 to the DPW's overall budget, not specifying for cemetery, but add it to their budget. Then the DPW can dash, access actually additional funding to care for the cemeteries through their budget and it will be the charge of the DPW Director and Cemetery Superintendent for need and the Perpetual Fund will still be managed by the Town Manager. Nothing will change with that fund. The Town Manager authorizes that spending, that money and they will still also have control, shall also still have control over all the operations, day-to-day maintenance and everything else, which is still under the purview. It's a clerical position, it's a redundancy. It is not its own organization. Mass General Law says if you have it, you can have elected officials, but it would be up to you to make the decision whether that should be an elected position or it should just go to the purview to the Town Manager and the DPW, which is where it's at. And that's basically just a recommendation that I'm putting out there to the Board, that this is a redundancy organization of elected officials that doesn't need to be there and I think it's additional red tape that's not necessary for a conservative community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen, thank you. All right. Do we have any other public comments online, on Zoom, before we proceed tonight? Any public comments in the room? All right. I want to thank the public for coming forward this evening and letting their voices be heard, is a very important part of government function and again, public comments are an opportunity for three minutes to say whatever you want to say. You can stand here and swear non-stop according to the State Supreme Court and we, we will not interrupt, but again, it is three minutes. Do we have any announcements this, this evening?
Just that there is the Master Plan Public Forum on the first, I think that was 4 to 6 and 6:30 to-
6:30 to 8:30, yes. 4 to 6 then 6:30 to 8, yep.
And that's at the Lunenburg Del Activity Center and the Special Annual Town Meeting warrant is open right now and that's open until March 18th at 4:00 PM.
All right. Communications from other Boards. We did receive a communication, and I didn't mention this, I know I missed the last meeting that we had due to illness. We have a, we did receive a communication from the Library Trustees and I will forward that to the full Board, but really it was, it was directed toward the Town Manager and it was just a, it's a request from the Library to separate, to separate funds for technology from the general IT budget and allow them to have a kind of their own IT budget. So just want to acknowledge that we received that request. I know that that request does come with some challenges and complications, but just want to acknowledge that that request was received. Do we have any, let's see, we don't have any scheduled appointments this evening, but we do, we did conduct interviews previously at our last meeting with members of interested in joining the Conservation Commission. And so we are looking to appoint one of those members to a term set to expire June 30th, 2024. And if that member is so inclined, we start our, our process to reappoint soon and so hopefully whoever we decide this evening will be available for an appointment or interested in an appointment beyond the end of June. So I want to open to the Board, I did have the opportunity to review the interviews. I think I'm prepared this evening to, to vote, but I just want to give the Board an opportunity for any discussion prior to making this vote.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just for clarity, at the last meeting, for those listening who watched that, that we were waiting for a third applicant and that third applicant has rescinded their application, so we will not be hearing from a third applicant, just so people who are listening get the full picture and don't think we're just forging ahead without acknowledging that.
All right. Thank you for, thank you for adding that clarification, Mr. Alonso.
If I, yes, may. So I'll, I'll just, if, if we're diving right into it now, I'll just make some comments on the applicants. Number one, I want to thank both applicants who did appear last week. Always appreciate people stepping up to volunteer and fill these roles. I think while I believe that both applicants are certainly qualified for the position and both have, you know, relevant experience I think to bring, at least in terms of having served on a, one applicant has served on a Board before. I am inclined to support Jenny Puthor based on a few factors, but a big one being that, while she's been following along, she's, she's very committed and has actually watched entire Conservation Commission meetings, including one that ended at 12:30 AM, and also has familiarity with the Stormwater Task Force functions and the whole Stormwater, you know, sort of regulations and all that, that govern that. So while I think that either, I would be comfortable with either candidate, my support is, I'm speaking in support of Jenny Puthor.
All right. Before we have any, any motions here, any other comments or reflections?
I would agree with Mr. Franco's characterization that both candidates, first of all, I thank them and I think both of them would be excellent candidates.
Thank you. Mr. Nuzzella?
I also am going to be supporting Jenny tonight. I think she brought a lot of passion and energy, so I think that'll help her in her role. I also like that she had personal experience as a resident going before the Commission and it's an opportunity to allow someone new to volunteer for the town, which I think is exciting, so I'm going to be supporting Jenny as well.
Selectmen Imke?
So I'll just add, I think what a great situation to be in, or quote, problem to have, to have, to decide between two candidates. That makes me very happy and I, I just want to say for whoever isn't appointed to the Conservation Commission to please consider volunteering for another Committee or, or Commission, whatever on, in town. I have the same, I would support Jenny as well for the same reasons that Mr. Franco and Mr. Nuzzolo said. I admit I am a little biased about the Stormwater Task Force part of it. I'm not going to, just to put that out there. And I, I very much like the fact that she's gone before the Conservation Commission already and I feel that will only help her in being a member of that Commission. That's, yeah, that's all I would say.
Yeah, I want to also thank both applicants for stepping forward. It's a, it's a really good thing to serve your community in any kind of way and to volunteer time for the, you know, a lot of what conservation does is protecting the, well, all that they do is protecting the environment for posterity, but it's, it's often managing requests from fellow homeowners, so it really is an honorable, honorable duty to perform. Hearing the feedback from the Board, I will move to appoint Jenny Puthor to the Conservation Commission to a term to expire June 30th, 2024. Second, any additional discussion? All right. This will be a roll call vote. Mr. Nuzzolo?
Aye.
Selectmen Imke?
Aye.
Selectmen Alonso?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. All right. So to Jenny, please be sure to get sworn in with the Town, excuse me, with the Town Clerk and that's downstairs, first office on the left. As soon as possible, please reach out to the Chair of the Conservation Commission so that way they can provide you with meeting materials for the next upcoming meeting and also please take the time to review the Select Board policy as it relates to appointed members of, appointed members of any multi-member body Boards. That policy gives excellent guidance on, on how to be successful in your new role. So congratulations Jenny and again, thank you Anthony for also stepping forward and we hope that you will step forward for additional opportunities and roles that the town may offer. All right. I'm going to turn to the Town Manager. Do we have any, I think you may have a brief report this evening. So to the Town Manager.
I'll just review our, our existing vacancies, both with volunteer and with the town for staff positions. The Architectural Preservation District Commission has one vacancy. Cemetery Commission has one vacancy until the next annual town election. The Council on Aging has one vacancy. The Green Communities Committee has one regular member and one associate vacancy. The Open Space Committee has one member-at-large vacancy and the Personnel Committee has one vacancy. You can find the volunteer application form on the town website, complete it and return it to the Select Board's Office and if you have any questions on these roles and responsibilities, you can contact the Select Board's Office and that is 978-582-4130, extension 144. For employment opportunities, the Executive Assistant to the Town Manager, that is a 36- For employment opportunities, the executive assistant to the town manager, that is a 36-hour-a-week position. Facilities custodian, 40 hours a week. Heavy equipment operator, 40 hours a week. Land use director, 40 hours a week. And staff librarian, which is young adult, 30 hours a week. And a temporary administrative assessing assistant, which is 32 hours a week. And these opportunities can be found on the town website as well and how to apply. The other just verbal update I want to give the board. I received today the spreadsheet from Sean Cronin. From, he's the deputy commissioner of the Division of Local Services. I had a call with him, and let me go back a minute because I don't know if everyone listening heard last week's meeting, the finance committee meeting when it was discussed publicly had been sent out to everyone through email, finance, school committee, and select board and various internal staff, that we were notified of the shortage of 40S money, which is a local aid receipt. And 40S money is money the town receives to educate pupils within the 40R district, which is Smart Growth District, which is the tri-town area. So this is a calculation that is done during mid-year. And it's based on the prior year's numbers. So when they went to do the calculation, Division of Local Services, and this is input information received from DUCI, which is Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DMV regarding motor vehicle excise, property assessment information from the town for those property within that district. And what it's supposed to do is say, is, there should be a positive number at the end of the calculation, and we had a negative number, meaning we received more in funding to educate those pupils in that district. So it made us ineligible to receive 40S money. The two drivers were, there was a reduction in number of pupils within that district. It went from 59 to 55 children in that area. And as well, we received a big bump in Chapter 70 money last year. And that changed us from a minimum aid community to a foundation aid community. So it made us ineligible that way. There is a possibility that we will be eligible again next year. But I will not be planning on budgeting anything in that line item right now, not knowing that at this point.
Can you just remind us what that total was again?
$342,000 and some odd dollars. So approximately $342,000.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
To, along the same line of questioning as your own, can you tell us what the increase of Chapter 70 was last year?
I believe it was around, we received around $900,000 more. But I wanted to verify the numbers. I received the spreadsheet. The numbers that DUCI plugs in aren't, doesn't look like a complete equivalent to what we received in Chapter Aid money. So I think it's a calculation, another calculation on their part, that number is inputted in the spreadsheet that I received.
Okay. And I'm assuming you have been in contact with?
Yes.
One, if not all of our state delegation, because here is an opportunity where the state delegation can have an effect, one would think. Because again, this, we chose that smart zoning because of the funding. We did an 40R in that area because of the 40S that was promised. And, you know, to say that, well, we increased your Chapter 70, but, you know, by X amount, then we're going to take half of it back or somewhat, however much percentage of it back, seems to be, you know, disingenuous at best.
I know, speaking with Sean Cronin, because I've talked to him three times in the last week. They are looking internally with their legal team, if there's any legislative changes they can make. Say no communities depend on local aid as a firm number for their budget. And to receive this news mid-year, it can be devastating to a community. We luckily, we estimate our local receipts very conservatively. So speaking with Karen, we both agree that we'll have enough at the closeout at the end of this fiscal year to cover that deficit because we are conservative with our local receipts.
So hold on a second. Maybe even I misunderstood this. The number that we got that we're not getting it is not that we're not getting it for next budget year. We're not getting it for the current budget year.
Correct. Current and next year. That was in my.
I obviously know where all the extra crack is going in the state legislation. I mean, what, that's insane to remove $380,000, $80,000 from a town's budget in the middle of, not even the middle of the year, you know, beyond the middle of the year. It's just, I mean, it's bad enough when the economy calls for such measures, but.
Can I, oh, wait up. Can I ask a question about the Chapter 70 number that's used in the equation for the Smart Growth reimbursement? It's my understanding, and I don't know if this is correct, that the Chapter 70 money that goes into that equation is only the Chapter 70 somehow adjusted for the number of students in that Smart Growth community. So you said we got 900,000 in Smart, in Chapter 70 last year? 900,000, it would be, I mean, divide by the total students, I guess. And then there's, there were 59 or 59 last year, 55 students this year.
But that's not why they gave us the increase.
No, but that, I mean, that's one of the numbers, you subtract that. I mean, we ended up with a negative number from the equation to calculate the Smart Growth reimbursement. And it's, it's basically how much the educational cost for the eligible students, so the students in the Smart Growth District, minus the, the Smart Growth revenues for education, so what you paid, no, sorry. Chapter 70 is part of what's subtracted from that. But it's not the full Chapter 70. It's only the Chapter 70 that's.
Yeah, to me, the number doesn't make sense. I followed, I sent a follow-up question to see. That number is calculated. So for instance, in the spreadsheet, the additional Chapter 70 for Smart Growth, so in children, they're saying is $728,577, which last year the number was $1,290. So the numbers to me don't make sense. So I have followed up.
What was numbered last year? 1,000?
1,290.
And what is it this year?
728,577.
I don't know. This sounds, I mean, they're four students. It's a difference of four. Right? So that, that.
Magic.
I can't believe that impacts the equation to change it from 342,000 to a negative number.
I have followed up with that question. But this is what I was provided. I wanted to give an update as soon as I have information. So I agree. It doesn't make sense. The local revenue was only about 20,000 more.
That is a shareable document, I'm assuming.
Yes.
I would like to see.
I will be passing it along. I just want to give that verbal.
Thank you.
Salkman Nuzzolo, I know that with you on Zoom, not in the room with us. Feel free to just go ahead and jump in here if you have any comments or questions.
Okay, thank you. I do it right now, but thank you for sharing that.
I also want to add, just speaking with Mr. Cronin, that, you know, they're looking at possible legislative changes, including removing this entirely from the cherry sheet, you know, how it's dispersed. Because it's a program, you can't depend on that funding every year.
Obviously.
The other component, not only this, that the qualify, not qualify, is that if, how the program is funded. If it's not fully funded, then that is split proportionally with those towns within, that qualify for this program. So it's always been for the longest time, just two communities, us in Lakeville. And recently Beverly, I guess now is a qualifying community. So even had we had 342,000 in our budget and they fully funded the program mid-year, if someone, another community qualifies, that number is going to change.
Well, it's the mid-year part that's problematic, which I didn't know. As far as the fully funding, I mean, the Community Preservation Act does the same thing. I mean, it's how much the money is and how many people participate, and that's how you disperse the money. I'm like, okay, I can deal with that part of it. What I can't deal with is the mid-year cut is the most egregious of what I think is a violation. But the other one is, if the legislation doesn't want people to take advantage of these districts, here's a good idea. Don't stop making the districts. Like, they did it as an incentive to do it, and then they got town, at least two towns, to do it. And then all these years later, like, oh, you know, too bad, that's gone. I mean, it's not, it's not legislating in good faith, as far as I'm concerned.
Is it mid-year because it's reimbursement?
It's a reimbursable program. That's how the law is written. You have to incur the expenses before applying for. And there's actually on the form that's submitted, you can waive, like, you don't want to receive that money. I don't know who would do that.
This is for the dollar for the presidential fund, the presidential election fund too, on your IRS tax forms? Yeah.
But it is, when you receive the spreadsheet, I know you're going to have questions. Some, looking at FY '24's calculation, so some of the categories are FY '23 numbers, like local appropriations. But the state number on their total spending and their regional school district aid spending is based on fiscal '22. So that was a question I asked too. So you're using, you know, last year's numbers for a local, but statewide numbers two years ago. So it's a confusing formula.
If people want to know why people, residents and citizens feel distrustful of government, go no further than this.
Yeah. Well, I mean, they promised to, you know, you increase the housing, and they're going to step in and support the students that come with the housing.
Right.
And then they say, well, hey, we only have two communities. How many voters live in those communities? You know, and I think we got to be real. It's probably, you know, 25,000 total. And then it's, hey, you know, that's like a part of, it's a couple of streets in Boston, you know? And so, hey, you know, thank you for adding in all those extra homes, and now you're on your own.
I think it's more about the dependability factor as far as, like, this is something, a local aid number should be pretty firm. It shouldn't be that much variance. I can see 10 or 20,000 variance maybe, but that's large.
So it kind of just goes to the point that I know we've had in this board in years past about why we are so conservative with our estimates for local aid. And it seems to, you know, I know that we've all supported the approach. Local receipts, thank you. And I know we've all taken that, supporting that approach because of the what-ifs. So this is really unfortunate news, really unfortunate news. All right. This is probably a good time to then comment back that I have spent the day reaching out to, you know, I'm a little off agenda here as I say this, but it's relevant. Spent the day reaching out to our state delegation. So Representative Kusmerik, Representative Scarsdale, and Senator Cronin. Spoke with all of them and extended an invitation to them to meet with us on February the 20th. I've also extended an invitation to Carol Archibald, the chair of the school committee, and Evan Waters, the chair of the finance committee, to join us. And the intent is to provide, set aside, I think we're going to have a 45-minute allocation of time. But the intent is to meet with them to discuss two and a half, some of the challenges that we have as a community navigating through, you know, Prop 2 and a half. And I think that it would be reasonable to also discuss this 40S funding at that time. So this is a separate meeting from the one that we have usually every, end of every winter, every spring, in which we go over our legislative priorities. So I will be looking for us on an agenda coming up prior to the 20th, for us to just talk through kind of what we, what we want to prioritize when we meet with them. Because I think that there are some real challenges here when, when the state says, here's some money. Oh, psych, no, it's not here, as well as being challenges in an environment where, you know, your health costs are going up 6%, your energy costs are going up 5%, 6%, and your max tax levy is two and a half. And so how do you, how are we expected to manage that as a town? Whereas you look at the cities across the Commonwealth, yes, they have two and a half, but they have so many other funding sources that they're not really limited to it. That on the tax side revenue, they do get that two and a half, but by being a city, they're eligible just for a much larger pot. And so they're able to receive a lot more funding. And so really, the only people that have to comply with two and a half really are the towns. And so without there being the funding from them, you know, how do we, how do we weather the storm? So I will be, again, looking to have this conversation upcoming, but it's just, you know, appropriate to mention it now in light of the news that the town manager is sharing and that she shared with us previously.
Mr. Chair, are you planning for the meeting in the 20th to still be a 7 o'clock start?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just by the way the calendar is, I believe, I mean, the only option is discuss that on the 13th.
Correct.
So you were saying, okay.
Yes. All right. Anything else to, for the town manager before we go to our first old business topic?
No, I also emailed the delegation as well in saying, we do this annually to talk about budget priorities. And it's an opportunity to address other legislative issues that we want to bring forth. So I'm sure the finance chair is representative and the school committee chair is representative of the school committee will bring forth their priorities and legislative topics that they want to advocate for or oppose as well.
So you and I will sync on it, but we're likely going to have two meetings with them. One this, one in February and another one in March. But we'll sync. So I didn't tell you. Usually you and I do a check-in before the meetings, and I know I didn't call you before the meeting, so. All right. Distribution of ARPA funds. So we have in our Google Drive a spreadsheet that identifies the committed ARPA funds, the total amount paid to date, and the available balance. You know, I think what this, what this identifies is that there's a significant amount of money that we still need to disperse. And then I just want to highlight that by having this money sitting in a bank account, that it did earn us an additional $101,889. And so our balance that was $58,856 as far as what was remaining to identify, that we now have an additional 101. But I would need to get clarity on whether or not that 101 is, follows the same rules as ARPA or whether that follows regular appropriation by the town body. So we have the list, and I will just turn it to the members or to the town manager. If anyone has any questions, comments on the list as presented. And after this, we'll discuss the sub-recipient grant agreement. And I think this quick overview is that the, well, I'll leave it there.
Want me to leave it? So I added a column from our last, well, first of all, Karen updated the total paid-to-date amounts. And I added the comment column to indicate which ones were under contract. Because if that's going to be a terminology that is going to be part of the U.S. Treasury's ruling on as under contract as committed, and to make sure we know which projects we have under contract currently and which ones we need to get under contract if that changes, if that terminology changes. So are there any questions on any of these?
Yes. The available balance column. That available balance hasn't been added to the 58,000 balance we have before, right? Like.
No, that's showing available balance, meaning, so let's take the ambulance for instance. We haven't received the ambulance, so we haven't paid out that 506,000.
But the police, I'm looking.
Yes, that amount can be added to that particular line, the police department one for the camera system failure. Because that is indicated that the balance can be reallocated. I believe that's the only one.
That's the only one that's complete.
Only one besides the $27.12 on the second one.
I'm looking for any news today.
Any other comments to the town manager?
No, from me.
All right. So a couple of things are pending a draft agreement, specifically the money for, I'll just walk through it. It's the $285,000 for the Lunenburg Water District. It is the 50,000, excuse me, $175,000 for the Boys and Girls Club. It is the fifty thousand, excuse me, a hundred, seventy-five thousand dollars for the Boys and Girls Club. It is the twenty thousand dollars for the Food Pantry. And I think that's, that's it. So those three areas.
Water District.
I said Water District first.
Oh, sorry.
So those are the three areas that, once we provide this grant agreement, then we can disperse those funds. And, and the rest, dealing with town departments, we really just got to send a reminder to them that, that we really need them to start expending, spending these funds. And they put in the request and they have to start taking steps now to get these funds spent as soon as possible. So that way, right now, the balance is that we have three point two million dollars that we've committed that is unspent. I'll, I'll give the specific number, three million, two hundred nine thousand, five hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. So of the original money received, which was three million, five hundred and seven, nine hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-eight cents, that the significant majority, the overwhelming majority of it has not been expended. And so we really need to make sure these funds get expended. Any comments before we move over to the sub-recipient grant agreement?
The expenditure date, just to clarify though, is two thousand twenty-six.
Correct.
Yep.
The last update that I can remember, the draft agreement was going to be reviewed by Town Council, is that?
It's currently with Town Council, I spoke with them yesterday and I should have something by tomorrow. And I did also pass the draft along to the Water District as well as the Turkey Lion, the Food Pantry, Turkey Lions Club and the Boys and Girls Club.
Do you receive any comments?
They had no issues with what they reviewed.
That's what I recall, see. I knew the answer to the question, Heather. Just trying to get it out in the public. All right.
Are we going to talk at all about how to use the balance or ideas or how we're going to approach that?
We can, if you'd like.
I have a comment, just, I think this is a good place to bring it up. I received communication from a resident last night that, about Westford. And they are, they actually have a plan in place now, it was just approved first week of January by Select Board, to use some ARPA money for PFAS testing of private wells. I passed the information on to the Board of Health, Lunenburg Board of Health. It's a very limited program. I mean, in a nutshell, they're looking, they split the town into quadrants, residents apply, they're going to pick fifty based on distribution. And so it's twenty, four hundred dollars a test, so it's twenty thousand dollars of ARPA money being used. They take samples to Nishoba in a local lab, it's not exactly the right name, probably, but, and then the results are shared with the, it goes on the GIS map. It's, so they're basically using it to get a survey of PFAS levels throughout town. I don't know if that's really accurate, but that's what they're doing. So I thought it was timely that it came up and that's one way that one town is, is doing it. So I pass it on to the Board of Health, the information.
Thank you. I think that's really helpful, that way they can make an informed decision on how to proceed with that, especially with the new standards coming out. You know, this week and last week, I reached out to a couple of consultants related to solar. So just in general conversation, I know I've mentioned this before, I'll share it again, is that due to current funding opportunities, we may be able to hire a consultant for roughly twenty-five thousand dollars who can then, that professionally navigates the space of municipal solar. With the goal of being, putting solar panels on the old town dump as a source of revenue for the town. There's a lot of details that, that go into that. First of all, if the town can expend twenty-five thousand dollars and, and have a return in excess of hundreds of thousands of dollars in income a year from it for the foreseeable future, it's certainly a win-win all the way around. But I think that there's a couple of, there's a lot of questions such as, you know, does the money go into the general coffers? Do you set up, you know, secondary funds? How does the solar plant get, or solar farm get managed? So there's a couple of like just basic kind of just maintenance type questions that I have. But I am looking to have that scheduled. I did ask for times in March. So that is one thing I am looking to bring to the board is kind of hearing out this presentation. And then the second, I know I mentioned this before, was with Habitat for Humanity. And this is a fully separate thing, but you know, as we kind of look through our property, what would, in my view, you know, we are below our ten percent threshold and what that means is as far as affordable housing. And when we, when we are below ten percent, we are eligible for forty Bs. Once we hit ten percent, forty, we are, forty Bs don't apply. And so, you know, as we think about, you know, what's going on, what's being proposed at Howard Street, we think about increasing opportunities for residents to have water and sewer, that, that all of that increases opportunities for someone to come and buy up a large parcel and plop down a forty B that then changes dramatically the character of our community. And so if there's a, if there's an opportunity for us to be strategic about partnering with an organization such as Habitat for Humanity, providing them with, with land at little or no cost and in exchange, having a, a development plan that allows for housing that would be targeted for seniors and for veterans, but often seniors, and strategically continue to build public housing for seniors. And, and let me rephrase, public, these aren't often public housing. It's often homes that, that are restricted, so that way their deed restrictions being affordable homes. And so Habitat for Humanity, their typical model is to build these homes at little to no cost. They provide a minimal to no interest loan to the occupants, that way they're homeowners. And it becomes a deed restricted property that as they sell it, it has to go to someone else who's eligible. But if we can partner with an organization like Habitat for Humanity to get ourselves to hit ten percent and remain there, then I think that that's for the benefit of all of our residents. So I have had several conversations with Habitat for Humanity, I've met with them on this. So I'm trying to advance this conversation so that way we can come and hear a presentation from them. But I know that our, our portion of this is, we would have to make an offering of what land or what parcels would make sense. So there may be some dollars spent related to that as well. And so those are the only two ideas that I've currently am thinking or have. I don't think that the value is fifty-eight thousand dollars, I think the value is probably closer to thirty-five in total. But that's, those are things that I, I will be asking the board to consider.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Well, one thing, it's going to, it's going to change the entire complexion of our discussion in any way, depending on whether that hundred and one thousand dollars in interest, how that, how we can dispose of that. But secondly.
I'm sure distribute is what you're calling it.
Distribute, yes, well, disposition is what I meant, but it sounds worse when you use the shortened dispose, disposition of those funds. Secondly, I want to say that, you know, that's good, that's good out of the box thinking, I think, as far as the housing. Because not only, we can then sort of provide, so I know it's where you're going, housing on our terms and not have terms imposed upon us. So I do think it was kind of draconian too, the fact that if you just fall under the threshold, I think we fell under the threshold by like nine units or something.
Yeah.
When we were totally opened up to this. I mean, it's not even a pro or an apportioned thing, it's just, it's like a hard trigger. You're one unit behind, boom, you're opened up to all this. So I think it's good thinking, you know, certainly a discussion worth having, details to come later, I imagine. But secondly, on the solar, are you at liberty to mention the consultant?
I have not mentioned, because I'm, I'm actually speaking to two different companies. But I have not mentioned, but I will schedule a meeting with both and we'll come forward.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Any other thoughts, comments? Okay. So we received the draft board commission handbook. I know that at our last meeting, members had the opportunity to provide some feedback. For me, I'd like to provide my feedback digitally. I did ask the town manager to email and she did a PDF version of it. I will say, we have a PDF in, in Google Docs and I just could not figure out how to get it out of there. And I saw that there was a way like send a copy, I don't know if I should be sending, I don't, I don't. So I just asked for it to be emailed over. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to mark it up and make a bunch of notes in the PDF. As I walk through it and I found, as I was reading it, that I had, you know, you're taking notes and I think I got to about page five and I'm like, this is too many notes. So, and not that, not that the starting point is bad, I'm not saying that. But I had a lot, I found that I had a lot of comments. And so I will provide them digitally, so I don't, I'm not going to contribute anything to this discussion today. But is there anything the board would like to offer additional to this, this evening?
Just that I'm already concerned that you're on page five and have a lot of comments. I'm about two-thirds of the way, almost three-quarters of the way through. And I, like I mentioned last week, I first took like a thirty thousand foot pass, you know, just to see what the general content was. Now I'm still, now I'm grinding my way through, you know, sort of sentence by sentence, but I'm, I'm still liking, so. But I have not done.
Yeah, I think it's an excellent, excellent starting point for us to have a, a good conversation about this.
I had no issues except for the remote participation policy, which I voiced, and that's the one I didn't mark it up. That's the one I think I'd like to focus in on because I want to make sure we get it right. We've been doing it kind of, you know, ad hoc and we just threw things together and the legislature threw things together so everybody could get through COVID. But we really need to, going forward, there are certain parts of the remote participation that work well and there are certain parts that are just not working. And I think we have to come and talk about what that balance should be and come up with a final policy that reflects that.
Yeah, I'll add to that, I agree with that. That's, I read that section with the previous concerns that you've expressed in mind. I read it through that lens and because I share the, you know, that there should be a preference for, or in-person participation should be done to the extent possible. And at least when people are participating remotely, that they should be made visible on it, which is in there. It's in, it's in the draft now, that they, that they be made visible to, to all, instead of hiding behind, you know, just their name online, so.
Any additional comments?
So with regard to the handbook, I do have some more nitpicks, just to add on to last week, but I can send them digitally as well, instead of like discussing minor edits right now.
Okay, do you have any major edits?
No, not really, but now that I've gone through it a second time and like in a lot more detail, I really think this is going to be a great resource. So I just want to say thank you again, Heather, for putting this together, I think it's going to be very helpful.
All right. A lot of time went into that handbook, a lot. Thank you. All right, environmental policy. So what, where these are at is I know that the town manager is, is reviewing policies with, with staff for feedback. There was also a request from Parks Commissions to receive a copy and provide comments as well. So, you know, I realistically expect that this is going to remain on the agenda for some time. You know, we did not create an ad hoc committee. As I take another look at it, I mean, I think, my opinion at this point is I think we need to shave off probably about half of what I initially proposed and limit it back, but I, I think that that's going to be feedback we're going to receive anyway from other, other boards and departments. So if there's anything major that anyone wants to offer as comments, as feedback, I'm here to receive it so that way we can note it. But I do expect that this will be a standing topic for a while and we may find ourselves toward the end of March before, I think we have a substantive discussion once all that feedback's received. Okay, review bylaws. So this has also been up here for a bit. And so I do want us today, I know that we pushed this off a little bit. I do not expect that we will have all of this finalized, but while the warrant is open, we need to identify what we can finalize. Well, we can kind of do it after the warrant's open, closed, but. So if we can just start with chapter, excuse me, chapter one eighty-four. And I want to make sure we're in the right section, so let me just get to it in our drive. All right. So chapter C, section three, one, general provisions and chapter three point two, select board. This, this is part of the charter, just as a note, anyone looking at the agenda. And then we have our chapter three oh five, select board, Board of Selectmen or Select Board Policies. And then once we get into, chapter one eighty-four is when we start getting into some of our bylaws here. So if we can pick up on one eighty-four. So as we look at chapter one eighty-four, this is pawnbrokers and dealers in metal. Are there any suggested revisions to this bylaw?
You picked one of the three I did not have to read.
It's two paragraphs, believe it.
I know.
It ain't tough to get through this, this one. So, I mean, I would say that, notwithstanding the fact that I don't think we have any in town. And if, I mean, I have no problem with what's there, but I don't even think we have an active pawnbroker or dealers in metal license.
Correct. All right.
And it was just amended.
Couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And that amendment a couple of years ago was to change Board of Selectmen to Select Board. I don't personally have a substantial, I don't have any amendment to this one. Does anyone else have any suggestions, comments on this? Are we comfortable saying we've reviewed this and no changes?
I am, I am.
Caesar?
I don't have any changes for this one.
And I know Renee's reading it. Again. All right. I do think this is an important bylaw to have. I think that, you know, working, it's no secret, I work for Mass Development, I've said it several times. One of the, one of the properties that, that, some of the properties that often become challenging for communities are pawn shops and the location of pawn shops. And I, and I note that in, in using Worcester as an example, Mass Development, there was a pawn shop right across from the Hanover Theater. And, and it was certainly having a negative impact on the vitality of the theater district. Not that I want to stereotype here, but pawn shops become opportunities for, for people who are sometimes down in their luck to be able to make a quick buck. I didn't mean for that to rhyme. And, and so sometimes you do get an attraction to pawn shops that, that, especially in urban environments. Again, they're a valuable resource for many communities, great show on television about some awesome items that people can find. But in practice, sometimes it becomes, it can be a character of, there's often a hangout around them as well. It, it sometimes brings a little bit more, depending on the placement of them. And so one of the buildings we had purchased was a pawn shop, so that way we can revitalize it and support the pawn shop from relocating to a location that wasn't directly across from a vital theater district. And it was, it's, it's been a successful redevelopment. So I do think it's important that we have some kind of guidelines for these things. I know that this isn't, I'm talking about zoning in some ways, but, and that we have expectations for, for people who are in that. Because they also can be a type of business that becomes predatory, unfortunately, with, with some of the things that happen. Again, I do think it's a necessary thing to have in communities, pawn shops and metal dealers. But I do think it's important that we have regulations related to them. Any comments, Selectmen Imke, I was trying to talk through your reading. All right, so I think we're all in agreement that we have evaluated sex, chapter one eighty-four, no changes will be made, this will come off the agenda and that portion is complete. Chapter seventy-four, Select Board.
Did I say I started at the top of the list and went down?
You started at the charter?
I started in the order they're listed, yeah, sure.
All right, so I probably should have clarified, we're not looking to make any amendments to the charter at all. That, that's part of the charter review process. That was just provided as guidance for, everything is subordinate to the charter. So any, any bylaws that we have that conflict with the charter, that we need to revise them so that way they're in sync with the charter. And then all of our policies, of course, are always open for discussion at any time. But the gist of it was not so much to go policy by policy as much as recognizing if we see any conflicts in our policies. So do you want to, we can go in the other order, Renee.
We do have, we do have comments from Town Council about chapter seventy-four.
Okay, so let's, let's take chapter seventy-four, let me just look for where those comments are at in the drive.
It's in the same folder. What's it called?
Really?
Bylaw versus Charter comparison.
SB bylaw review.
Got it. Okay, so why don't we start there then? I didn't even, I did not recognize this. this document in here. I must've missed this one. Um, so what the town, uh, what, what we received was, was noting that, uh, bylaw citation 5-3, um, and charter citation 4-21. And the bylaw states that all public grounds, parks, buildings and places of, of public resort owned by the town shall be under the supervision of the select board and the use of the town hall may be granted by the select board at their discretion. The charter states that the town manager has full jurisdiction over the rental and use of all town facilities and property except property under the control of the school committee and the conservation commission and shall be responsible for their maintenance and repair of all town buildings and facilities placed under his control by this charter bylaw vote of the town or otherwise. And then inconsistency or potential conflict is noted. Uh, to compare contrast supervision per the bylaw with jurisdiction or the charter, the bylaw gives the select board supervisory power with respect to certain public facilities and the authority to allow for their use, yet the charter gives the town manager full jurisdiction over the use of these facilities. So looking at that guidance, um, I, uh, any comments before I offer mine?
On this particular one, I haven't reached a resolution on this one yet, whether I think that this is necessarily, uh, conflicting or inconsistent. Um, and part of that is, my training is in, in terms of legislative interpretation, which is to the extent that two provisions that might look conflicting can coexist and can be reconciled, they, they should be. And I haven't reached a conclusion on whether supervision and jurisdiction are the same thing, uh, or can somehow be distinguished. So on this one, I have no resolution. I have, but when we get to the next one, I have something useful to say.
All right.
So.
Any other comments?
I think all of chapter 74 is superfluous. As all the, all the powers and duties of the select board are clearly stated or should be stated by the charter. None of these are policies. These are just like general duties automatically should be resolved, yeah, removed because the general duties of the select board are, are enumerated in the charter. Claims or suits against the town were, I mean, again, these are one of the powers and duties, representation of the town, liability on, I mean, all four of them. I don't see how they're not already covered in the charter. And so why put, why put a gray area where you don't need one? It's, it's hard enough to interpret what's in the charter because words are words and reasonable people can determine their meaning in different ways, but why have two different sources for two sources of words that can even compound it? So I would say that this means, this, this section means nothing to me. It adds nothing.
So I, I know Renee's looking.
I'm confused.
So we, we were going through just, uh, I know Tom was reading the 74.
Oh, we were talking about 74.
No, I, we, we were, then I skipped, Tom.
Then, then we went to five.
So.
Five, okay, sorry.
I, I fully agree with you. I think all of chapter 74 should be repealed.
I'm either ahead of the class or behind the class. I will take either one.
The comments that we can, I, I don't want to make us too confused here. So I, I read the comments that were noted in the town council's report. Let me just pause on that and come back to it. So let's just hit 74. 74, we have comments in here, uh, from town council. I'm not going to read these. Uh, the gist of it is exactly what Tom just said. Um, I support a full repeal of chapter 74. It's no longer applicable.
I don't, may I?
Yeah, of course.
I don't know that 70, not only do I not know that 74-1 and 3-2B are saying the same thing, I also think that they are not inconsistent with one another. So I think that they can certainly coexist. That said, I mean, I don't have a problem with repealing 74. I'm just saying that, uh, I, I know that town council flagged this, but I don't see these as being inconsistent. Well, you know, if I, and, you know, I might wind up reading these. Bylaw states, "The select board shall exercise a general supervision over all matters affecting the interest or welfare of the town." That is sort of more 30,000-foot view policymaking, things along those lines. The select board has no authority to become involved in the day-to-day operations. That is sort of the micromanaging, the, the, you know, employee type, uh, uh, discussions, things like that. You know, they, they shouldn't be, you know, contacting and directing employees and, and all of that. Uh, "The select board shall, uh, act only through the adoption of broad policy guidelines that are to be implemented by officers and employees serving under the town." So the way I look at this, I sort of model this or overlay this. This is why this is a clear distinction to me. I serve on the board of trustees of a private school and there's a delineation between what the board does, which is governing, govern, board does governance of this organization, which is a nonprofit. The, uh, the administrators do, uh, management. So this is, this, this to me is the same as, as distinction as, uh, governance versus management. One is sort of broad and overarching and 30,000-foot view. The, uh, the other is the day-to-day implementation of those policies. So I think that these are completely consistent with one another.
I, I, the reason why I didn't read them is I completely agree with you. I, I do not agree with town council's comments here. I do not think that there's a conflict. I agree with what selectman Alonso stated, which is I think that the charter already, it is a bit duplicitous, that the charter already gives us a lot of this authority. It doesn't need to be outlined, but, but 74-1, I think is, is probably the only part that, that I may want to hold on to because I think it does provide a little clarity that I, that I prefer. Um, I think that because the town manager reports to and operates under the authority of the select board, that, um, you know, what supervision means, it's a broad term. Um, and, and I think it would be, I do believe that the select board exercises general supervision over all matters affecting the interest and welfare of the town. Um, uh, I, I, I think that that is clearly part of our primary duty. Um, and so, and there's a lot of things that come underneath that. Now, we create a framework that says, hey, we've hired, uh, a, a staff member, uh, an employee who has, you know, these different duties and underneath her responsibilities, you know, we will, you know, not meddle, so to speak, that, you know, this is your lane, you, you got it, you know, we're not going to, but, but if there's a problem, right? I mean, for us to remedy, it is to exercise a supervis, to supervisory authority. Um, so I don't think in and of itself it's a conflict. I think that, and I don't think, I think that with, with the difference in language, it's pretty clear that, you know, our role here is not to call up, uh, a staff member and say, hey, I need you to go down to Lancaster Rav and throw some salt in the road. That that's not our duty. But if there's no salt in the road in Lancaster Rav, it certainly is our duty to go to the town manager and say, hey, Heather, we got, you know, four inches of snow in the ground right now. Uh, what's going on? Uh, and I'm using them as an example because we know that that's never a problem at DPW, ever. Um, but I do think that I, I don't necessarily in and of itself see a conflict there.
I'm sorry. Good.
I was just going to say that, first of all, I, I would make some points. First of all, I, I happened to agree with town council that there is a conflict and the, the, the potential conflict. He's not indicating there is one. He's saying, he's indicating a potential conflict because of the language differences. So again, what somebody thinks of as exercise general supervision over is way broad and which brings me to point number two, is that I'm not looking for two things that can coexist. I'm determining for myself that one of them, meaning the bylaw, does not assist in clarifying. The fact that it can coexist in that if read a certain way, it doesn't, may not necessarily contradict, I would add in a dispositive way that it doesn't add to the clarity of what we do that isn't already in the charter. I mean, the, the part of the charter that gives us our duties, uh, is very clear and it couldn't be more clear than this. This, and this is from the charter, section 3.2. "The select board shall have all of the executive powers it is possible for a select board to have and to exercise." Now, I don't know what could be clearer than that. So telling somebody in a bylaw which is subservient to the charter that, hey, you have general supervision, I'd be like, okay, but didn't you already tell me that from that sentence? And that's all I'm saying, is that making things superfluous adds the potential for conflict, not that they might coexist. Cause I would agree that for some people they may. I just don't think it does anything in a positive way.
Is your position, Mr. Alonso, for repeal of 74?
Oh, yeah. I think I, I think I said that.
Okay, I thought you did. Uh, selectman, uh, uh, Imke?
Yeah, I agree. If it doesn't add anything, then why? Why, why include it and just open it up for possible alternate interpretation? I mean.
Will the bylaw precede the charter? I will say that.
Oh, right. I understand how it's talking, right.
Yeah, yeah. But, so I would agree with Mr. Alonso.
Selectman, uh, Nizolo.
So I completely agree with Mr. Alonso. Uh, the way that the bylaws exist now, it's not helpful at all. But I also don't think I support repealing it yet because it seems like it could be a good framework if we ever want to add specific policies or guidelines that are appropriate for a bylaw to have this. So I don't know. Um, I'm, I'm not really sure if I support repealing it yet. But point taken. I agree with Mr. Alonso. It's not really adding any value.
Okay.
All right. This is not a, not a hill I'm going to die on.
I'll, I'll put that up there too.
Uh, first of all, does the, the, the town manager wrote through you, Mr. Chair?
Of course.
Do you have any opinions on the, uh, whether this should be retained?
Uh, the only opinion I have is, is duplication. I don't see any necessity for duplication in the bylaw when, when the charter supersedes the bylaw.
So that would be an argument for Mr. Alonso's. But let me just throw one more thing out there. Uh, you know, again, it's not a hill I'm going to die on, but, um, so let's look at the charter. The charter says that the select board shall act only, only, only through the adoption of broad policy guidelines that are to be implemented by officers and employees serving under the charter. That's it. So we, we, we put out a policy and then the, uh, town manager and, and, uh, town, town, um, administrators run, uh, for the day-to-day. However, what, what, so what happens in a circumstance, for example, if we haven't reserved for ourselves the right to exercise a general supervision over matters, let's say that there is something, a particular matter on a day-to-day operation, which under normal circumstances, we wouldn't be involved in, but now, uh, the town manager or, or wants to, wants us to weigh in on it, but we don't have anything to cite where we can weigh on it. I think we could cite this general supervi, uh, supervisory authority to, uh, be consulted on the matter.
I don't know if I have a comment. Do you have any thoughts?
I don't. I, I was like examples. So you had an example.
Oh, you're asking, see, I like to speak in very abstract, concrete, concrete terms.
And I'm very concrete.
I mean, uh, you know, again, I mean, uh, let's put it, let me, let me rephrase it this way. So, uh, to either, uh, selectman Imke or, or Nizolo, uh, where are you on this at the moment? Have you, are you still with me on this?
On the full repeal or not?
No, no, no. Keeping 74. Uh, keeping 74-1.
I, uh, here, we're, I, Lou, I, I think what I want to kind of do after you is go through and see where everything is duplicated at, verify that. I think I, I support, I'm split. I could support a full repeal of chapter 74. I do like 74-1 a lot. Um, I do think it adds a lot of clarity that, that isn't otherwise there. Um, you know, I could see us getting rid of everything else and keeping 74-1, um, as, as, you know, and then that way we have a chapter for us in the bylaws that we can build off of at a later date if we need to codify any policies into, into bylaws. So I, I'm, at this point, I'm kind of, want to negotiate with you and, 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 uh, selectman Nizolo to see where the, I, I've heard the positions of, um, Mr. Alonso and.
And you also just want to point out, I don't, I think there was sort of like all sides of the set. Um, that's a really big inconsistency though, between the charter and the bylaw, from having the select board shall exercise a general supervision over all matters affecting the interest or welfare of the town and what is, hold on, the verbiage of the charter. The charter characterizes its role as policy making and restricts its involvement in day-to-day administration. So I can understand the argument that it sort of depends on interpretation and the example that you cited, Mr. Chair, you know, I do think there's room for our involvement in maybe general overarching or broad day-to-day involvement, but I, I don't know. I'm not convinced that there isn't a minor inconsistency in that.
Well, I, if we can kind of just, just flush that out a little bit, I mean, if we look at that first sentence that Mr. Alonso made reference to of powers and duties in general, "The executive powers of the town shall be vested in the select board which shall be deemed to be the chief executive," I'm reading from you.
No.
"which shall be deemed to be the chief executive office of the town. The select board shall have all of the executive powers it is possible for a select board to have and to exercise." And I think if we didn't have a bylaw that said, well, and to clarify what that, what that means is a general supervision over all matters affecting the town, if we didn't have that clarity, I think then what we have is a conflict with, well, how, where does our chief executive duties end and where does the day-to-day on the town manager's side begin? And I think that, that to me, 74-1 does have some value. So I think I've talked myself into 74-1, but I think it has some value, but it, you know.
I guess my question is, why do council characterize the charter as just stating that the select board's role is policymaking? Cause now I need to just, I need to go over the charter again for a second. Hold on.
Well, I don't think, I agree with you and I don't think our role is just policymaking. I think that that is, that is.
He characterizes it as the, the charter is saying that it is, then that's an inconsistency.
I mean, the voters.
It also says, "The select board shall," I don't know. I guess maybe I don't necessarily agree with that interpretation.
I, I was engaging with you, uh, selectman Nizolo. I cut you off though. Would you mind? I don't know if you want to finish that thought.
Go ahead, say what you're going to say. I don't think I heard what you were saying.
I blanked. I, I apologize for interrupting you on that one.
Can I further into this discussion? Um, uh, so I, I can't think of a specific example, but I can think of a scenario, you know, a general scenario. Let us say that we've, the select board has, uh, adopted or created a policy for X and then in the implement, in the day-to-day implementation of that policy, the town manager is uncertain as to whether any action she wishes to take is consistent with that policy. She could then appeal to the select board in its general supervisory role to have a discussion about whether her proposed actions are consistent with the intent of that policy. So we would have something to cite for that and say that, um.
Isn't that just interpretation of a policy, not supervisory?
Uh, yeah, well, yes, but, but, but I, but, but like, but then who gets to interpret the policy, I guess? Um, uh, so the select board's made a policy and that's all, then, then they say their hands are off. Our hands are off of it. Now, does he run with that? That means whatever you think it means. Um, which on a day-to-day basis, for the most part is probably fine. But then you get into a scenario wherein exercising your day-to-day authority, you, you are uncertain as to, you, you want to seek specific explicit direction from the select board to do it. The, the select board in its supervisory capacity could then interpret what that means.
Yeah.
It's placeholder. It's not something that's going to happen all the time and, and I guess if the, maybe this is a hill I'm going to die on.
You are persuasive, Lou.
I'm going to get wounded on this hill.
I, I know it's a hill I've already died on here. At least, at least it feels like that.
I'm ready to roll down the hill.
Yeah.
All right.
So I just want to go back to what I was saying because I reread the charter.
Yes.
Right. I know we were going to say something. Um, so the charter says, I'm just going to read two sentences here. "The select board shall have all the executive powers it is possible for a select board to have and to exercise. The select board shall serve as a chief policymaking agency in town." So now I'm going to go over to what town council said, and this is what I disagree with. So yes, whereas the bylaw empowers the select board to exercise general supervision over all matters of the town interest, it does. The charter characterizes its role as policymaking. Also technically true. That's the second sentence that I read. The first sentence also establishes executive powers. Then he goes on to say, "and restricts its involvement in day-to-day administration." I don't really agree that it does restrict our involvement. So I guess I'll leave it at that.
You know, Caesar, uh, selectman Nizolo, thank you for noting that because that brings me back to where I was at and I agree. Um, I. I think that is totally logical. Like, if we think about like buildings, and I want to just go to buildings, that's probably my world a little bit, like where the property is under the care and custody of the Select Board, but the town manager has full jurisdiction over rental and use. That does not mean that the town manager has care and custody of the property. It just means the town manager's jurisdiction over rental and use. And so, you know, you can have language that's strong like that, full jurisdiction over rental and use. And that still, you know, when you sign a lease with someone, you sign a lease for someone to temporarily or for whatever period of time have the ability to use something. Doesn't mean that they can change the walls. Doesn't mean that they can make a lot of structural modifications to the building. It just means that there is a limitation on what their role is. And yes, you're using this robust language. And I think that using that in this kind of context, to me, it is the same, as to your point. Involvement in day-to-day, well, all of the policies that we have chief authority over affect day-to-day. I think the language, though, is that it's not our job to manage on a day-to-day level. But certainly, our role is to impact what occurs on a day-to-day level. I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily agree with Town Council's comments here. But if we look at the provision seventy-four-one, which again is what he's coming back to here, and then seventy-four-three, I think we've heard the opinions. Let's just kind of take where we're at. Caesar, Selectman Nizolo, is your opinion that at this point seventy-four-one should be retained?
Actually, no, I think it should be repealed. I just don't think it's necessary at all, actually. I think the charter says exactly what this bylaw says, pretty much. It says, hold on one second, I'm gonna get the exact verbiage. I'm thinking of it as it should over again.
Okay. If I can, if I can interrupt.
Go ahead.
We're two to three. Two in favor of holding and three in favor of removing. Did you want to contribute anything else to that, to seventy-four-one?
The rest of me.
Yes.
I think that is where we are. I'm sorry. I think that is fair to say that that is where we are.
Well, just to read that sentence again, the charter says that the Select Board shall have all the executive powers that is possible for a Select Board to have and to exercise. I don't think there's anything additional to build off of that in bylaw.
I think that if we envision a town manager that translates day-to-day, I think there's an opportunity to minimize what full executive authority means.
Yeah. And this doesn't make a lot of sense, but that's fine.
All right. So it sounds like we're two to two and a half. But we're two to three on seventy-four-one. Seventy-four-two. Do we see a provision specifically where in the charter that gives us the authority? I know we haven't. Over claims and suits against the town. Where is that found at in the charter?
The sentence that Mr. Nizolo just read from the charter. That's an executive function.
I would argue, then, that if we don't, we'll have to take another look on that one. But I would argue that if we don't have it spelled out about lawsuits and suits, I do think the charter then adds clarity to that point. I do think the bylaw adds clarity to that point.
I just have to check on that.
By the way, just, again, from a philosophical point of view, there is no document that you can write to take into consideration every single permutation of every situation that will ever happen now and in the future. That is not the, that is not the purpose of the documents. That's how the U.S. Constitution is only, you know, so many thousand words long, and that's to run an entire country. So the charter gives broad powers, which clearly are stated. And if somebody wants to argue that dealing with lawsuits is not an executive power, then make the case. But putting something in there that says, hey, by the way, we take care of lawsuits, and then something comes in that's also not explicit in the charter, and we say, oh, in the bylaw, we also take care of these, and we take care of these, eventually it gets unwieldy. That's really not the intention of the documents.
All right. I'm trying to find consensus here. Seventy-four-two. Caesar, are you in favor of repealing seventy-four-two?
Where do we leave seventy-four-one?
I don't think it's necessary.
Two to three.
I'm also assuming, I don't know, maybe someone could help me have a better understanding here, that what a Select Board can and cannot do is probably regulated by state law as well. So I don't think it's just up to us and the potential town manager that might have disagreements with what our role is and what our role isn't. I'm assuming that that's like actually codified somewhere. Is that wrong or?
There's certainly lots of case laws that would show that Select Boards can handle claims and suits against the town.
Yeah, and only the Select Board. I do believe, being on the Charter Review Committee, that there's another section of the charter that may not necessarily be in three-point-two, but that exists, that makes reference to lawsuits. But I'll come back to that. Thirty, seventy-four-three, representation of the town. That's, anyone, I'm turning to you, Selectman Franco. Do you think seventy-four-three should be retained?
I'm still stuck on the previous two, but I guess. Philosophically, let me go back to this whole philosophy. I agree with Mr. Alonso that there's no way you can envision every scenario, and your document becomes unworkable if you do that, and it becomes inflexible. Because if it tries to address too many things too specifically, then you have an implied, then it is implied that things that are excluded were not intended to be included. So, however, I guess, I mean, these are relatively small provisions in terms of overall content. Why explicitly eviscerate explicit statements, explicit authorities that are granted under this? Why not retain them?
Lou, I'm convinced now to retain the whole thing. We're working through it. Because we are too, we started this, and I was repeal seventy-four. And as we're talking through it, I am now like, let's hold on to it. But I think, I think where we're landing here is that we are two to two and a half. I think that you and I are probably on the same page. I think that Selectman Franco and Selectman, excuse me, Selectman Alonso and Selectman Mki are on the same page, the page I was on twenty minutes ago. And I think that Selectman Nizolo is kind of working with us on back and forth. I don't know if a repeal, when we're split two to three, or three to two, is a good idea. I think that we need to be a little bit more overwhelming, but we also need to have the majority of the board. The majority is three, and sometimes we're not going to reach overwhelming consensus, and three is okay. So I'm trying to gauge right now, do we, do we go with the three and vote to repeal this? Or do we table for another day and know where we're at?
I will substitute philosophy for practicality. We are arguing for twenty-five minutes or discussing, arguing in the Greek sense for over a half an hour on four sentences that, in the end, mean absolutely and add absolutely nothing to this. So anything that gets us off our agenda, so I don't have to talk about four sentences, I am in favor of.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso. I mean, it is one of our goals. We are trying to work through it. I understand it's twenty minutes.
So does that mean you will vote to retain? No.
I will abstain from any vote on this. It is really, this is really getting to the point of pointless. I have to say, and if my frustration is showing, so be it. We are arguing nothing here. We are arguing nothing.
I respect your viewpoint. I don't agree, but I respect where you're coming from.
What's the, how bad would it be to take this up again on the thirteenth?
It's not, it's not bad at all. But I, I think we, I don't know if we're gonna reach consensus on seventy-four.
I think that we, on something of this magnitude, I mean, we think we should, when we're three to two, I think we should see if we can at least get that to a four to one.
Okay. And that's typically my viewpoint.
Is this some standard that we're trying to establish now? I mean, four to one is the standard for bylaws now? I just want to know what the standard is. It sounds like people are just coming up with like new principles. I thought it was a majority board.
It's always a majority.
Well, clearly, that's not true.
I think some, I think sometimes, though, when you're trying, I hear what you're saying, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Alonso. And I get it. We're not talking about a lot of words here. But I think that when a handful of words can engage us for thirty minutes, that it is something that's worth sorting through. I think that sometimes accepting the three and moving on is not always the best result. And so trying to strive for overwhelming consensus, I don't know if twenty-five minutes is enough to say we're not there. But I do think it's worth to see if we can resolve any of those differences. I do think that we've, I do think we've talked enough about seventy-four, though, today. All right. Let's see if we can. Selectman Mki, you had several comments and notes. Let's start with you.
I did.
Oh, I thought you mentioned that you wanted to start from the top. Did you have any?
I just started reading tonight from the top. That's how far I got while I was eating dinner.
All right. The last area is chapter five. Let's save chapter five for another day. Chapter five is a little bit more detailed. Do Town Council have any comments on chapter five?
That was in that chart that you.
I missed that.
Yeah, that was the first one you read.
Okay, five, five-three, that's correct. So the comment there is five-three, supervision of public property. Clearly, parks are a conflict here by being noted.
Mike has a lot more words than seventy-four.
Sting.
Just gonna put that out there, considering how much time we spent on seventy-four.
All right. We have some time here, you guys. All right. So. Selectman Franco, I think I'll just talk to you offline about seventy-four and see if you and I can reconcile any, come to any agreement between us.
Yeah, I'll, you know, I mean, I can, I invite pushback from the other side of it, too, so.
All right. Okay. All right.
Are we gonna talk about three oh five? That's the one that I thought was, that's the remote participation one, right?
We can hit three oh five if you'd like to.
I don't, three oh five's very long, which is why that's up.
Well, three oh five is, three oh five in here should be brought into line with whatever is in the handbook.
Yeah.
Which is not right now. This is, all this was adopted eleven years ago. We were still, you still had to call the operator, had to be plugged into the phone back then.
I thought the handbook came from, no, okay, no. And that is correct. So that's why I'm of the opinion that the Select Board policy should not be in the codebook because they can change, you know, multiple times a year. And the codebook is done once a year for upgrades, twice a year, most.
All right. So I think that what we need to do is we comb through the handbook and as we looked at, look at our policy, which is identified as chapter three oh five. I think we need to reconcile for ourselves where the best place is for this to live. You know, policies are a little easier to change than a handbook is.
Right. We do have the up-to-date policies on the website. So, but that right there is from the codebook.
Okay. All right. Well, we can tick off one eighty-four. All right. Any other topics on bylaws? Any other discussion on bylaws?
Just a, just a general overarching comment, if I could. I understand Mr. Alonso's point about, yes, we, you know, it looks like we're three to two right now. But I think that on certain issues, if we, if there's a potential that we could arrive at a greater census and next week, say, two weeks from now, Michael Ray and I, Mr. Jeffries and I are both totally convinced, then we can put this thing through with a five-oh when it was, and in favor of what you're advocating. And I just think it's just too close at the moment, and that we, it's, the fact that there is this much, you know, that we are this divided right now, I just think it warrants another look, that's all. And then we can settle it up on the thirteenth.
I concur. I don't think it's wise for us to go before a town meeting while we ourselves are split to ask them to make a decision that we're split on. It's better when we have an overwhelming majority, especially if it's a pause that relates to the Select Board. All right. Well, we'll keep working, and again, no result is status quo. Current business, discussion on common victory license compliance. I added this to the agenda to make a note that we had a business that did not come before the town to submit a common vic license request. That business has continued to operate. And it's, in my view, it's appropriate to move forward with scheduling a meeting with that, with that organization, that business, as required by law. And so we have noticed the individual to appear before us, is it the thirteenth?
Yes.
To appear before us on the thirteenth related to operating without a license.
Makes sense.
Okay. Discussion on fiscal year twenty-four budget, fiscal year twenty-five budget, capital plan, annual town meeting in Warren Arvocles. This is gonna be a standing agenda topic between now and town meeting, or until the book looks at mail, will be now in town meeting. Any comments, thoughts on this, aside from the notes I made earlier in the meeting?
I mean, I don't know whether it's here, or, I mean, I do want to comment on the last few meetings, public meetings from the FinCom and the School Committee, and the call for potential two-and-a-half override. And I think, I don't know whether that's, discussion is here, or whether it's under committee reports, or whether it's under public comment at the end, so I don't.
It's here.
So I will say just a couple of things here. Number one is that the, the town historically has had, in, at least during my residency here, two overrides. I think the last successful override was in the early nineties. It was before I moved here. I think it was ninety-one or two or something. And it was for school, the purpose was for the schools, I believe, and the sum of the town because it was to keep the library open, too. Anyway, that was the only successful two-and-a-half override in this town since I've been here since ninety-three. And then there's been two other ones, two operational overrides attempted, both failed. So they have been done to those people who say, we should do it. The argument for those were very similar to some of the speakers at those two meetings, the School Committee and FinCom meeting, which is that even at its best, inflation can outpace even the two-and-a-half potential. You know, we've been very fortunate over the last, I don't know, ten to twelve years with inflation that hovered around two to two-and-a-half percent. And so we were able to keep pace, and then there was, you know, there was at least a decent amount of new growth in town to maybe a little bit outpace it, but very, very small. But the years before then, you know, if I look back to when I started in two thousand and five and onward, some years, you know, inflation was well above two-and-a-half percent, and health insurance increases back then were regularly seven, eight, nine percent a year. And so people said, we can't continue this. We are falling behind. And the money that we're raising does not meet, you have less buying power because of that. So I understood all those reasons, and even with those reasons, and I supported both those overrides for those exact reasons, they did fail, and they, to my knowledge, certainly one of them wasn't even close. One of them was a little closer, but still was a pretty resounding no. So the town has a history of not being a big supporter of operational overrides. That's, I just want to give that as a backdrop. Second, from an, you know, from a procedural standpoint, or from a preparation standpoint is better. It takes a lot of time and a lot of effort to put together an override. To do that, you need to come up basically with two budgets. You need to come up with a budget that shows what it would be like without an override and then one with an override, because if the override fails, you need to go back to something. You can't reasonably, in good faith, pass an override budget at town meeting. And then if that fails, you. if that fails, you'd be in a deficit situation, so you'd have to remedy that quickly by law. So really, you'd need to have two budgets. To put together two budgets takes a lot of time and a lot of effort. And usually one knows that there's going to be a budget override need well in advance, like in the summer or early fall, so you can marshal forces to get behind that and see what, what the general sentiment is. I will say, at this point, this close, it's already gonna be February 1st in a couple of days, the town manager, through no fault of anybody's or certainly not her own, we are without a finance director, we are without some assisting accountants, we were without a principal assessor who's not gonna start for six weeks, to put together two budgets between now and when the budget has to be released is beyond, I think, beyond Herculean request. I don't think that it can be done in any way with, it just can't, it wouldn't be done. The, the amount of work would be monumental to do. And to drum up support, you would need to see those budgets, you need to have discussions about what those budgets look like, before you could get people to, as one of the public speakers said, to make an informed decision, you'd have to have a discussion about them. Well, if it's gonna take, we haven't even seen the first budget yet, which is coming up now, which is by charter when the budget has to be released, to get to a second one where we can discuss them and get it ready by the end of March, or beginning of, middle of April, I meant, so that we can print budgets and have the amount of discussions that would be necessary to pass one, I don't think is realistic. And I think it puts a lot of undue pressure on the, the town manager and the town manager's office in, in town to do that. This is notwithstanding the fact that, again, I understand the projected budget deficits, and those should be discussed, but we need to have departments and we need to have the town in a place where we're looking far ahead, where that, those come up way early in the process, you know, than now, than, you know, late January, where now people are clamoring from nobody talking about it, to people saying, we need to have an override in a matter of a week and a half, with no anticipation that this was coming. So to all those people who were talking about it, I understand what you're asking, but I, I think you need to understand what is required in this case and what the history of the town is, to put in all that work when there's a good likelihood that it would not pass would even be more, that would be more of a drain on resources. So just wanted to lay that out as a backdrop scenario to these discussions for what's been happening up till now. And I did listen to both the school committee and the FinCom and all the comments, and I appreciate people commenting and making their voices heard, but I just don't see, as somebody who's supported overrides in the past, both of them, I just don't see it happening this year at this late date with nothing on the table except a, not even, not even a preliminary budget, just talk of a preliminary budget. That's, we don't have any data to go on, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Franco.
Yeah, I, I definitely appreciate all those observations. I think they all make a lot of sense, so, so very pragmatically speaking. And also, if it turns out that there were a true need for an override, why have one, why have the effort go down in flames this year almost certainly, when you could keep your powder dry and have a better chance of success in fiscal 26? So, because you've got, as Mr. Alonso outlined, you've got a longer runway to plan it properly and not just throw some, something roughshod, you know, and see if it flies. So basically, I'm concurring with what you say in a, in a pragmatic sense. Doesn't mean people don't have a right to push for it, but there are very pragmatic reasons for not doing so.
I'll, I'll offer his commentary. You know, 30 years ago, when you looked around the town and looked at, you know, who worked for the town of Lunenburg, and the overwhelming majority of our staff lived in Lunenburg. And from then to now, and prop, you know, two and a half has not been around for ages, it came about in the 80s, and as we look from then to now, and we look at our current body of staff, and very few can afford to live in Lunenburg. And what have we done over the past 35, 38 years? We've increased taxes by two and a half percent. You know, now, in an environment where health insurance is going up at 6.6% or whatever the current year's rates are, but health insurance is going up at 6% a year, we know that energy costs are going up at sometimes 5% a year, but we have a two and a half percent maximum amount here, plus new growth, but it ends up being like 2.5, whatever, it's about 2.5. The cost underneath that increase at a far greater rate than, than 2.5%. There are a lot of things out of our control. And so who gets squeezed are the staff. They're the ones that get squeezed, that, you know, when we don't have the funds, because the budget doesn't allow for it, it's how we end up when we do comp analysis, it's how we end up having staff working full-time for us, making 30-something thousand dollars a year or low 40s. We all know you cannot afford to live in Lunenburg on a household income of $35,000 a year, a $40,000 a year, you probably can't do it on $70,000 a year. So we are putting our staff in a position where they're servicing a community they know they can't afford, many of them know they can't afford to live in. But on the taxpayer's side, when the taxpayer pays their tax bill, their expectations and standards don't decrease, because staff that are working for us are only making 41,000, they still expect a $100,000 level of service. So, you know, several years ago, we did budget cuts, and I have raised this concern every single time we've negotiated the clerical union, and I'll reiterate it again today, that we, we did budget cuts and we cut our staff down to four days a week, we took away roughly 20% of their pay, not quite, and we, and we said, these are austerity measures we need to take to get through. We squeezed the hell out of our staff. We are, we did not just end a period of, of, of bad times. I understand that many people feel as if the economy is bad, by every objective measure, the economy is growing faster than almost every other country on this planet right now. We are, we, our economy is, is growing. What is hurting people is their ability to afford, their ability to afford to live here. But we squeezed our staff and we cut our offices down to four days a week, we cut our staff down to 32, 30, 33 hours a week, and many of them are, are still at 35 or 36. So how do we get our staff even up to a full-time pay? 40, 40 days, 40 hours. Do we do that on a, on intentional four-day work week? Do we go back to a five-day work week? But my motive here is, we've squeezed our staff too much that we can't squeeze them anymore. Not, not that we need to, but we can't. And so we have an opportunity in the future that comes in and the budget needs to get tight, where does the money come from? I do agree that the task is Herculean, I do not think it's impossible, but I do agree the task would be Herculean to be able to come up with an override. My concern is not whether or not we should do an override, my concern is why are we dealing with two and a half percent? You know, I'm, I'm not one for more taxes, but we all know that we can't live our own lives, knowing that if you go back in time and say, my income has only gone up two and a half percent, it's, for most people, that's simply not true. Most people, as you look back at your income over the last five years, it's grown way more than two and a half percent. You look at your property values over the last five years, they've grown way more than two and a half percent a year. So to me, the problem is structural. Why, why are we as a town stuck in an environment where we are squeezing our staff, we don't have enough money for the things we need to get done, and we're in a, and we're in a state where all the cities do not have to comply, that they get two and a half, but they're eligible for so many other funding sources, that this is simply something that squeezes out the towns. So my issue is, I think that most people would agree that, you know, maybe we need 2.7, and maybe we need to have the ability to hit 2.7 or 3% every so often by right without an override. So my position is, the law needs to change. The rules of the game that we're operating under are unfair, they don't meet the needs of our staff, they don't meet the needs of our community, we need to change the rules. And I will work on that end. An override, roughly 20% of the town has, has kids in the school system, 30% of the town are seniors that simply can't afford it. They simply can't afford an override. And the other half of the town are empty nesters, people paying for college, people just starting families, and they can't afford it either. Now, if they had to pay it, they'd find a way to pay it, but if you ask someone to come and vote against, vote for this, it's not, in my view, it's not gonna happen. So to me, the answer is that communities such as ours need to have the built-in ability to exceed 2.5 once every so often, once every eight years, once every 10 years, bump it to three, bump it to three and a quarter. We need structural change, but for now, here and now, you know, I, I don't see how between now and May, we land at a point where we have a majority of the community that will come forward and, and say we need to have this increase, especially when you look, you know, at, you look at the school budget and if you dig into those details, the details being that the school budget, you know, from 20 years ago, I think the number's actually from, from, from 13 years ago, 13 years ago to now, it's almost doubled. Student bo, student body population has fallen over the last 20 years, test scores are almost flat. We have doubled the school budget for the same result. That is an indicator that, that, that we're squeezing too much, that we're squeezing our people too much. So we need, we need structural change, but I don't think the, the focus and the ire should be directed towards getting your fellow residents to try to come up and, and vote for something that they have way too many questions on in too short of a period of time. I think the answer is, two and a half needs to have some flexibility to it. And that's my comment. Any other comments on this? We have some minutes to approve.
I do have.
You wanna offer something?
Nothing, no comment on that at this moment. Just, I already covered, just because this was an agenda topic specifically for things, updates related to budget. Already covered the 2024 budget with 40S, that's a major update for this year's budget. Fiscal 25, I'll reiterate, as the finance committee has said at their meetings, we're still early in the process, there are numbers that are very significant that we do not have yet. Our final health insurance numbers, we're still working off an estimate at this time. We know it won't be more than 6.6% for active employee health insurance, but that final number comes mid-February. Our Monty Tuck assessment does not come to around mid-March. Our Worcester County retirement assessment number should be in tomorrow, and I'm still waiting on, you know, the school is firming up their numbers for their budget and reexamining the health insurance number. So those are all large numbers that come, will change the projection of the budget. Capital plan, there are no changes from what was presented when I gave my preliminary presentation on the capital plan, and no update on the annual town meeting articles.
All right, we have some minutes to approve. Let me just pull up the dates.
Seems like the September 12 minutes are not coming up, is it? Are you up?
Yeah, I can't get them expanded.
Yeah, I think there's some, there's some corruption on the file.
All right.
I can do it on my laptop.
What, you can open them on Google?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so it's just something on the, on the iPad. I've read them, I just was wondering, okay.
I have an iPad at home too, for this, I can access those.
Okay. Well, the 19th one I can, it's just the 12.
All right. Why don't we see if we can remedy the 12th and let's just make a motion in regard on the 19th?
No, no, I've read the 12. I've read them both, I just was looking at them here, just to refresh my memory.
All right, is there, is there a motion?
Uh, yeah, I just wanna say as a point of order, I'm gonna split these, because I was not at the meeting on the 19th, so I will make a motion to accept the minutes of, for the meeting of September 12, 2023.
Second.
Second. You can still vote for.
I know. But we have enough members that I don't need to.
Okay. There's a motion and a second, any additional discussion? All right, Selectman Nuzzolo.
Aye.
Selectman Mkey.
Aye.
Selectman Alonso.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And an aye for myself.
And I would make a motion to approve the minutes of September 19, 2023.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, Selectman Alon, uh, Nuzzolo.
Aye.
Selectman Mkey.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Abstained.
Did I say Selectman Alonso?
No, aye.
Aye for, aye for myself, all right. Action, warrants. We have an accounts payroll warrant in the amount of $56,563.63. We have a payroll warrant. We haven't hired anyone in your time soon. The amounts have been consistent for a while. We have a, excuse me, payroll warrant in the amount of $973,643.41. All right, any action items? Committee reports?
Um, school committee, superintendent presented a modified proposal, proposed budget, but also she announced that the finance director decided not to accept the position after all. So the school, the school committee.
School, right, okay.
Is finance direct, is finance directorless, so.
Your heart almost came leaping out of you.
I know, I know, I saw that, I was like, oh.
Wait, wait, and then you said schools, okay, yeah, I heard, I heard that.
Yeah.
I will say that the board of assessors met yesterday, but I wasn't able to listen to it yet, but they also meet tomorrow.
No, that meeting has been canceled.
That meeting has been canceled?
Yours.
Late, hold on, late breaking news.
Yeah.
Meeting, okay. When is it?
And your, obviously your meeting is canceled then, because you were posted to attend it. I will be speaking with the chair tomorrow.
Okay. And then the FinCom met on Thursday, I think we've spoken at length about that, so. I will say that we did get one of the items and, no, I, I'll leave that, I won't, I won't come back on this, sorry. I was gonna say something about another committee, but I'm not going to.
Please, okay.
I believe I'm up to date on my committee reports, I don't, I don't think I've had any since our last select board meeting, so.
No, I have nothing.
Selectman Nuzzolo, do you have any committee reports, Nuzzolo?
Uh, really, so the planning board met last week, so the development at 255 Sunny Hill Road, which I've talked about a couple times now, they requested a continuance on their public hearing to February 26, they're having issues with DEB, so no names really, but that is ongoing, so.
Okay. All right, upcoming meeting schedule, we are meeting, we are not meeting next week, because we are meeting the last meeting of the month, and we are taking the first meeting off. We are scheduled to meet on February the 13th and February the 20th. We also have a site walk that we're trying to coordinate for the Saturday between these two, and we're just gonna confirm that and get back to everyone, and that's, again, with open space and parks. I just wanna clarify, you know, I just wanna clarify that, you know, part of what the open space request was, this board created the open space as an ad hoc, and part of what they do is look through the properties that, that are under the care and custody of this board, to identify properties that would be better served elsewhere. I do agree with the comments that were made earlier today in public comments, that, you know, in light of their request to us, I am gonna seek for us to come to a vote on their request and, and, you know, yea or nay it, or provide them with additional requirements for us to be able to make a better informed decision. But I will be looking for us to make that, to have a vote following that site walk on their request. Public comments. Any public comments this evening from the town manager?
Actually do. It's related to a public comment that was made at the beginning of the meeting by Mr. Burden. I want to set the record straight, essentially, because he indicated that I spent an hour and a half with him, made litter and no comments and small notations, pulled up an email where we set up this meeting, and I said, would, you know, such and such date work? I'm happy to listen to your concerns, but I likely will reserve any comments until a joint meeting where the chief is present. And subsequent to the meeting, he then And subsequent to the meeting, he then wanted a follow-up meeting and had previously agreed that we would meet with the chief present after that and then refused, but still wanted to meet with just me. And so I just wanted to make that clear, that it was well-known that I would not be commenting back on any of their concerns. So meeting was for me to listen to his concerns.
Okay. Any public comments from the public this evening? Mr. Passios, good to see you.
Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street, a member of the finance committee, but my comments right now are going to be my personal comments, they are not the position of the finance committee because I have not reviewed this with them. The brief comment earlier in this meeting about our recommendation for hiring a grant writer, I implore this committee, the, we actually voted on that, there was a motion seconded and voted to recommend, and unfortunately, I left strongly recommend out of the motion. That communication was intended, or actually, the motion was to send it to the town manager and the select board. So I ask that you not take that request lightly. We had some substantial discussion about it during our meeting, and what prompted it was our experience at MMA conference this year, speaking with other grant writers from all over the state that are on staff in these towns, some small, some big, and the fact that we have billions of dollars coming into the states from the federal government, and we've got to have somebody on top of that. And I made it very clear that this was not anything to spite the town manager's efforts with her grant writing, which she's done a very good job with over the years, but she's also over, as you know, overburdened already, and any of the other members of other boards that have brought grant money in. But this is something that I personally am not going to let it just be mentioned and not bring it up every week and advocate for it to be in the budget for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments from the public? And this includes anyone joining us remotely on Zoom. How do you know how to raise your hand on Zoom with the button to press, I'm sure.
Under reactions. Reactions, for some reason, it's under reactions, I don't know why that is, because it's a sui sponti action, so I don't know, it's not reaction to raise your hand.
All right, any public comments on Zoom? All right, any public comments from the board?
I will say one comment, and that is in support of the town manager's comment, not about her meeting with the first public comment speaker this evening, but about subsequent emails over which we all, except for Mr. Chairman, gets for the reasons given earlier in the meeting. But the request has been very clear from the town manager about how the applicant or how the citizen is to go about filing such a complaint as he said he wants to do and consistently does not follow those simple instructions. It is a simple form that can be filled out and filed. That is it. We are not here and nobody is responsible for assisting somebody to fill out a complaint against the town. That makes no logical sense. We can provide you with the form, the form is self-explanatory, if you have questions about the form, you can have questions about the form, but not about the content that you're going to be put in. And yet, to this date, there is still no form that has been submitted by that citizen. And so we have helped, and the town manager, I don't say we collectively because I have not responded, but the town manager has responded with how to proceed with the action he wants to take. And yet, that action is not followed, and it is followed by other emails requesting identical things again. So just for clarity, I did not want to get into a back and forth, but that is a public comment in retort or in direct rebuttal of, quote, the testimony given, unquote. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I have several comments, but I'm going to behave myself and use my inside voice this evening, so.
Thank you. Selectman Nuzzolo, any public comments this evening? All right. I noted earlier, but I also want to just clarify, I know that we did hear a complaint earlier today about a road that had nine inches of snow on it, and I just want to again clarify that a private road that the town does not plow and that is privately owned by citizens, the town has absolutely no responsibility to ensure that your roads are plowed. Naturally, if you have nine inches of snow on your driveway, you create a safety issue for yourself. And you do, you create it for yourself. But the town is not empowered. You know, government is the power given to the government by the people. We do not have the power to go on a private property and compel property owners to plow their driveways. It's just not a town function. And also, the town does not, there's a statute of limitations on many things involving assault. I know that tonight we heard a complaint that I just want to note was from approximately eleven years ago, an incident that occurred eleven years ago. And we have been very clear that unfortunately, an event that occurred eleven years ago, we are not in a position to resolve a remedy. And homeowners can, individuals certainly can press lawsuits, but I know Massachusetts has a statute of limitation that likely has expired by probably six years. But again, we do welcome public comments, often the comments are helpful to inform us of things that we're not otherwise aware of, it allows us to look into things and provide a better quality for the residents that live here. I also want to just thank the board, I know that, you know, as we work through our bylaws, some of this stuff is wordy, it's challenging, you know, we're all here after working a full day. I was committed, I mentioned to Mr. Franco, to us all being home by 9:00 PM today, and we did run a bit late, so. That's all I have for public comments. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, roll call vote, Selectman Nuzzolo.
Aye.
Selectman Imke.
Aye.
Selectman Alonso.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And an aye for myself, the time is now, 9:17, the select would is adjourned, we are not meeting next week, we'll see you in two weeks on the second Tuesday in February, and February will be a shorter month for the board, we have two meetings scheduled and a Saturday site walk. Have a wonderful evening, stay safe.
Good night, everyone.